Others may be participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, there are a few things I'd like to cover for those hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important to know that all comments that have been submitted have been received and read prior to the start of this meeting. You do not need to submit the same feedback in any other way regardless of how it was submitted. Tonight, we do not have any public hearings, so we only have the community comment section in which the public will have the opportunity to speak if that's of interest. So tonight, I will call this meeting to order. And Liz, if we could do a roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Barube.
Here.
Commissioner Barbaro.
Here.
Commissioner Hayward.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Chair Agnew.
Here. Thank you. Okay, first, approval of meeting agenda?
I move to approve the meeting agenda as submitted.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting agenda is approved. Next, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from our Planning Commission meeting on October 13th. Any discussion on that? Any motions on that?
Prove to approve meeting minutes as submitted?
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those meeting minutes have been approved. Now, we will open it up for community comment. During this community comment portion, we invite residents to share relevant issues or concerns. Individuals must limit their comments to three minutes. I may limit the number of speakers on the same issue in the interest of time. Generally speaking, though, items that are elsewhere on tonight's agenda may not be addressed during the community comment. Individuals should also not expect myself or the rest of the commission to respond to comments tonight. Instead, any comments that we receive will be referred to staff, and we'll consider that for future meetings. So with that, if anyone is here to provide community comment tonight, I'll invite you to speak. All right, seeing no one jumping at that, we will now go on to reports and recommendations. So first, we have our sketch plan review for the 6016 Vernon Avenue, being presented by Director Teague.
Okay, thank you Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So this property is located at 6016 Vernon Avenue. It is the Keys Automotive Repair on the west side of town. The site is currently zoned Plan Commercial District 4, which only allows automobile service centers, repair, car washes, gas stations. Basically goes back to the existing, previous use on that site was a gas station, and so it's been zoned as such for many years. There are single-family homes to the north, and to the west, there's property that's zoned PRD 3, which is a condominium project. This property is guided in our comprehensive plan for medium-density residential, similar to the condos to the west. Another look at the zoning on top of an aerial map, so you can see the single-family homes to the north. To the south, there's duplexes. The site gains access off of Vernon Avenue. There's no access off of Eden Prairie Road, as you can see along here. Here's a look at the existing building. So what the applicant is proposing here is to remodel the existing building and do an expansion to the west, be a two-story expansion, for the purpose of a restaurant and office space. It would be a 68-seat restaurant. There's a 32-seat patio toward Eden Prairie Road, and there's also a second-story addition that would be an office, and they're labeling as a conference room. There'd be a lower level in the addition that would include a storage space for the restaurant and some office space. So this request would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change that guiding from medium-density residential to neighborhood node, a rezoning of the property from Plan Commercial District 4 to Plan Commercial District 1. That would be where a restaurant and an office would be allowed in a PCD 1 district. There's a number of variances that would be needed. Front setback variance to Eden Prairie Road from 35 feet to 13 feet for the building itself. It's generally similar to the existing setback of the building. A side yard setback for the building toward the east, or to the west, from 25 feet to five feet. A front setback variance for the patio built toward Eden Prairie Road from 35 feet to one foot. And a parking stall variance from 33 stalls to 26. So based on the number of seats in the restaurant and the office space, 33 stalls would be required. So quite a number of requests associated with this one. So some of the issues for discussion for the Planning Commission to consider, one is the comprehensive plan amendment. Two, parking, the site would be, or the project would be short parked by seven stalls. That upstairs conference room couldn't be used as a party room or something like that for the restaurant, as that would drive the need for additional seats. Something that would be looked at, again, as part of any formal application. A parking and traffic study would be required. In consideration of those setbacks, as I mentioned, quite a number of setback variances are requested here. And just the green space that's provided here, with this type of use adjacent to residential property, there's not much room on the site to provide screening. Code requires screening for these types of uses when they're located next to residential properties. Sustainability, the applicant would be asked to submit our sustainability questionnaire as part of a formal application. And with that, I can stop there, answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Director Teague. Do we have any questions on the commission? Please, go ahead.
Yes, Director Teague, I had, some of these may be for the applicant, but is there any mention of alcohol sales? I mean, would that be part of?
It wouldn't be part of the Planning Commission's review, but should the project be approved by the City Council ultimately for everything that's needed, they would then apply for a liquor license. That would be City Council action.
Okay. And I guess what drove that one, one was hours of operation were listed, and I saw, you know, till 12 o'clock, not till midnight, and it seems like food only, doesn't seem like an operation that would, you know, run that late, but I could see something.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be, could be considered as part of the land use review as well because of the variances and the impact to the residential area if we could regulate hours within any type of land use regulation as well.
And I was looking around, and as far as our review, we've often used that discretion pyramid scheme.
Right.
And this would, I assume, would fall in that lower base of a lot of leeway in what our?
Yes, absolutely. The city would have complete discretion to approve or deny this request, yes.
Okay. And then, a final one, and to be fair, this would have been best if I could have maybe have gotten this request to you earlier, but I'm just wondering if you see, or if there are any information or example of the Wooddale Valley View project, that was a conversion from a gas station to, I mean, it's not exactly the same as this, but maybe there is, and I'm just wondering if there's anything from that situation that would?
Yeah, so that one, it did, there was a parking and traffic study done as part of that. They've got the extra parking associated with the mall, so that changeover, and that was another rezoning from PCD 4 to PCD 1.
Okay, so that, okay.
So it is very similar in that regard, but they did have enough parking on the site, and there haven't been any issues, at least to my knowledge, about parking spilling into the residential area.
Okay. I guess I'm not, so, but it's, as it's currently operating, it's automotive repair or whatever, would a gas station be in that same sort of operation?
It could.
I mean, so, a reuse of this, if they wanted to remodel and run a gas station, I mean, they're fully authorized and?
That's correct.
Zoned for that, right?
Yep.
Okay.
But say if they wanted to tear the building down and build a car wash, that would require a site plan review, and we have setback standards, you know, they would need to go through that type of site plan review, and we could take a look at setbacks at that point, too.
I guess my point there was, I mean, we'd have to look at what it is currently zoned and approved uses for versus what they may be looking to do. I mean, that would seem?
Right.
To be an important. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. Yeah, could you just speak to the history of the comprehensive plan, and I guess why that was identified as multifamily?
Yeah.
Specifically, I know since we did the update, we didn't really partake in that specific area at all, so.
We didn't, and going back 10 years prior, it was guided medium-density residential also, so it's really been a continuation of that land use for the last 20 years at least. But you're right, we didn't look at this area specifically and consider the land use on that site.
That's fair, and I guess just a comment to the rest of us up here. I mean, I know part of the Housing Task Force, as well as the Climate Action Plan, is really taking a good look at our small-area plans, but there are one-off places like this that we should probably take a look at, too, just especially in advance of the next comprehensive plan, because, you know, times change, and this is news to me. Like, I didn't know what this was guided for until finding this out, so, thanks.
Yeah, if I had to guess, you know, 20 years ago, when it was decided that designation, it was probably just to continue the land use from the west.
I want to build on that question a bit, because I think that the comprehensive plan is important here. If there were to be a redevelopment for a car wash or something that fits in with how it's currently zoned, would that still necessitate an update to the comprehensive plan because it isn't medium-density residential?
Yeah, I think we really should. If there's a change in use, we should reconcile the comp plan and whatever the use is on that site. So the zoning really should be consistent there.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Any, yes, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so historically, like you're saying, for 20 years at least, it's been considered medium-density residential, and most Edina neighborhoods are single-family homes. So is it relevant to understand that this is a county road in this area, and it goes from, connects 62 to Highway 100, and that's probably part of the reason for that?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good point, too. Yep.
Any other questions for Director Teague? All right, I think we can move to the applicant's proposal. I guess not applicant.
Potential.
Yes. Yes, please come on. Do we have a preference on which mic or which area?
Hello?
Thought I saw it in here. Sorry.
It's okay. Real quick, I'll just start with, my name's Marty Collins. I live in the neighborhood. My business partner is Chris Davis, lives in the neighborhood. So we're, I'm about eight houses away from this location, but I've owned restaurants for 25 years, had about 13 of them, so. McCoy's in St. Louis Park is my baby. We've been open for 18 years. We have Nolo's downtown in the North Loop, and we've had a lot of success and a lot of fun doing this kind of work. So, long story short, we want to put something fun for the neighborhood here. We're coming up with a name that might stick, might not, the West Side Cafe. Chris and I both said, how great would it be to have a place to walk to and bike to in the neighborhood? And most of the neighbors that we've talked to are super excited. Of course, the ones nearest by are super nervous and scared about noise and parking and all that other stuff. But if I could stick to the restaurant side, we want a neighborhood place to hang out. We're thinking about breakfast, we're thinking about coffee, and kids grabbing a coffee and us going on the way to high school. We're talking about the neighbors coming in, opening up a newspaper, having a Danish, and taking their sweet time, hopefully not too much time sitting there, but we'd like them to spend more money. But at the end of the day, we could do lunch, quick service, grab a salad, get some soup, maybe have a burger. Counter-service, we're thinking more like a quick come-up, order, take a number, sit down. Not thinking about servers yet, but maybe for dinner, it could be a little bit more intimate, and have a server come to your table and ask you what you want. Food, alcohol sales for sure, beer and wine's an option, but we'd like to have mimosas for brunch, would be awesome. So we're going to shoot for full liquor, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But that's what we're going to go for. 68 seats, awesome place to relax with your friends and neighbors, and that's what we'd like to do. And that's it. Chris, would you like to say something?
Well, I can just say from here, just that?
Hang on one second, we just gotta get down to mic.
Oh, here, sir.
Yeah, walk.
My name's Chris Davis.
Marty and I, Marty and I both grew up in Edina, and went to junior high school and high school together, live in the area with our families, and we just want to do something positive for the neighborhood. If it isn't going to be a restaurant, it's going to be something else. We think a restaurant would be cool, so that's where we're at.
All right, well, thank you very much. There was nothing additional that you wanted to walk through with the presentation or anything?
You guys got the presentation ready?
Yes.
If you have a question, we'll answer them. Or if you already have them, you can.
Okay, we can go ahead and move to questions, then. Yes, please start. Commissioner Barube?
So, mine might be more of a comment than a question, but perhaps there's something you can address. So personally, you know, when I first started reading through this, I thought, oh, this is great, and just similarly to what you described, you know, to have a place close enough that you walk to and you gather with neighbors for coffee, that sounds great, right? And certainly in my mind, more attractive than an auto-repair place. But what concerns me are when I actually look at the numbers, and I see the number of seats and the number of parking stalls, I can really understand why the neighbors have concerns, because I think what we'd like to think is that everybody would walk there, but the truth is, they won't. And so, because it's Minnesota, and we have winter. And so, we'd like to think every other time, we'd walk there, but oftentimes, we drive.
Sure.
So, just being realistic and thinking about the parking, I thought about Hilltop. And I think of Hilltop as sort of a similar place, and I don't know if that is what you're envisioning, but, you know, I double-checked with Carrie on the number of seats there and the number of parking spaces. So they have 117 seats, and they have 50 parking spaces, and you're asking for 68 seats and 22, maybe 26 parking spaces, right, because you're going to give some to the staff. So if you just do the numbers on that, you know, Hilltop basically is talking about 2.3 people per parking place, and you're talking about 2.6 people. And it's a concern to me, because oftentimes, when I go to Hilltop, and I don't go that often, it's primarily, maybe I just go when everybody else goes, but cars are spilling out all over the place. And you're going to have less parking space, you know, fewer stalls per your seats. And so I can completely understand, you know, it seems one of the biggest concerns is parking.
I agree.
So, that would be something I would think of if I lived in the neighborhood. In addition to, you know, your thought of staying up until midnight, you know, if the house is right behind, that, I would be concerned.
Sure.
If I lived there. So I think that's something that you're going to really need to address with the people who live there, and either think about moderating the hours or, you know, whatever. I mean, I can understand why that would be an issue. But the big thing is, for me, would be parking, because I wouldn't want a bunch of cars in front of my house or on my street, and people walking there at, you know, coming back to their car at midnight. And of course, it gets even worse if you include the 32 people on the outside patio, because then you're talking like 3.8 seats per stall. So that's, that would be my primary comment at this point. Personally, I think, how great, just the way you described it, wouldn't that be fun? I would be there, but I'd probably drive. And I'd probably be sitting in, in front of someone's house on the side street. So I totally understand some of the concerns, and I guess that would be, you know, that's the hurdle.
So we, we actually, we, we understand.
Yeah.
And we are, I mean, we've, we heard it quite a bit at the little neighborhood meeting.
Yeah.
So we agree that there's potentially, most likely, a parking issue that needs to be solved, and we're trying to solve it, but?
Yeah. I admire you guys doing this, and I hope it works.
Yeah, me, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Barube. Commissioner Bennett?
I might just save all my, I have mostly comments. I don't have too many questions for you, so I'm just going to save that till later.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Bennett, I think we can go to comments.
Wow. Jeez, I think I teleported. I guess I have one question just for Carrie and/or staff. You know, knowing this, okay, so this site, big picture, how it connects to places, transportation is obviously the issue to overcome here, you know, the parking and we're getting there. Vernon is way wider than it needs to be there, you know, and I think if, if the city had a say, you know, we just keep it to one lane and dedicate either bikes, or maybe, you know, you have on-street parking for a use like this, and then it would kind of solve all that, and, I mean, as far as I see it, I've biked painfully, my kids to daycare along Vernon right here many times, and there's so much space, I don't feel necessarily safe, but it's like, if you had a use for a restaurant, you should be able to just park right there on Vernon, like, and so there's no parking there, so I don't know if there's something you could explore to have an exception, because there's enough room to do it there. And that's just what I'm offering to make this happen, because as far as I see it, I think this is wonderful, all things considered. I don't, I don't share, you know, there's different, you know, people choose where they live for a reason, there's nothing like this there, so there's probably not a huge desire for it, but if this were a potential by where I lived, I would be all for it, and like, how can we make this happen? Because this is where we want to bring Edina to the future. We want to have these neighborhood nodes to foster this community gathering that's so lacking, and can you think of a better place? I mean, it's an auto-repair shop with just broken-down vehicles every day, all day, transients in that type of way, versus people coming together as a community over a drink or some food. Like, what you're trying to do is very commendable, and I grew up in Mendota Heights, we had something very similar to this actually happen successfully. So there's a road called Dodd Road, it's 149, it intersects with what is now 62, 110. Way back in the day, there was an old town called Fisherville that no one really knew about, but it was right on Dodd Road. And it always struck me, because I live in the neighborhood right by it, like, why is there a gas station here and like a sign repair shop, and then just like the fire station and ball fields, like, why is this here? This makes no sense. And it's just a reminder that times change, right, and we weren't proactive enough to at least think of this as a potential for what you're proposing. So unfortunately, you have to go through like a comprehensive plan amendment if you do get this approved, which I think's a shame. And so what happened on Dodd Road was, they turned a gas station into a cafe, and, you know, we biked there, we walked there, they didn't have a lot of parking, but people made it work, and there wasn't actually parking on Dodd Road either, it's just, you know, I just see that as like, it is so similar to this, and like, I was in the neighborhood right by this, and we had nothing close, but now we could walk to something to get a panini. So, whatever you can do to make the parking work, I feel like almost every good project that comes before us, parking is the issue that dictates it, and it's a shame. So, that's why I'm like, you know what, let's just, I could say illegally park cars on Vernon, let's chop down those no-parking signs, I'm not going to say that, but I think we need to, we could have a conversation with the county on your behalf, just thinking forward, because our vision for Vernon is to make it a nice corridor for biking and walking, and right now, it's like I'm taking my kid's life into my hands, taking them to and fro along that, it's just, anyways, I just want to say, I really like it, I appreciate the neighbors' concerns, because again, if, if you're underparked, they're going to park on Eden Prairie Road, and, you know, like, just that aside, I think this is wonderful. So, thanks.
Commissioner Miranda, do you have any thoughts to share?
Well, I'm being called on.
Quite a bunch tonight.
This is like, fourth grade. Okay, well, I was kind of waiting till the end, because I have quite a bit to say, but some of it's been said already, so I'll be like what we ask for our residents, I won't repeat what others have said. Overall synopsis is that I think this is the kernel of a brilliant idea, but I think the details are wrong, and, so, let's only go into that. So, if you look at our resident-driven ideas, like the Southdale District Guidelines, all our small-area plans, and even the new climate change plan, we do want more interesting, fun, and useful places to go within and at the edges of our neighborhoods. we do want more interesting, fun, and useful places to go within and at the edges of our neighborhoods. So, having a restaurant or coffee shop or café or whatever, I think is something that would be really a great idea here. The climate change plan hasn't been adopted yet, but it goes before the City Council next month. Talks about two very important things, one of which is the purview of this commission, which is land use and transportation. And among those things, it talks about walkable places in our neighborhoods. And I think this would be a walkable place in the neighborhood, for the adjoining houses and condos. It also talks about reducing VMT, which is vehicle miles traveled, which is having fewer cars drive to and from this place. So, the nice thing about this area is that there are some apartments and condos in the area. And there's a lot of them to the west of here and even more so to the east. So, you know, it's within bikeable distance of quite a bit of housing, actually. So, I think that's, that's quite nice. But ultimately, it is, as I mentioned earlier, it's on a county road. And it connects Highway 62 to Highway 100. So, there's a lot of car traffic here. And I think this would only induce more traffic rather than reducing traffic. So, I'm a little worried about that. Personally, I'm not so worried about the parking requirements. I think a restaurant would probably build whatever parking they think they need. Perhaps we should have parking on the street. That's another good idea. I'm not in favor of requiring any amount of parking here. So, it's been compared to a number of restaurants. Well, first, let me say that I didn't know you own McCoy's and No Low's. I've been to No Low's before. It's actually a really nice restaurant. So, that's a, that's a point in your favor. You talk about comparing it to Colita. And it sounds like the architect worked on that project also. I've been to Colita also. I've eaten there with friends and my partner. It seems like it's a somewhat different neighborhood in the fact that it's, it is somewhat more dense. It's not really dense because it's mostly single-family homes, but they're much closer together. And this is actually in a node where it was actually a transportation hub before cars really existed. It was a neighborhood downtown because of a streetcar stop. So, we don't really have this in this area. It's just a few condos or apartments in the area. Colita also has northbound and southbound stops for Metro Transit Route 4 bus, which within 10 or 15 years will be a BRT line. Again, there's nothing like that in our area. So, again, it's going to encourage more car traffic in the area with that kind of a restaurant. So, but if you look across the street from Colita, there's another, a café called Café Series, which is actually owned by the same people. And that's more of a breakfast place. And that's a place that has absolutely no parking, as far as I can tell. And it has limited hours, no alcohol, and the outdoor seating faces the main street. So, you know, all these things are good things and none of these things are things that you're proposing here. So, I think that would be a better inspiration for what the neighborhood needs if you were going to go with a single, single-story building. I worry that, you know, I was on the Climate Action Plan Committee. And, you know, one of the things we're trying to do is to kind of get away from single-use, single-story buildings. And that's very much what this would be, this conversion. Even though it seems like, you know, it's in west Edina and sort of a more, I wouldn't say rural, but a less urban area. It is on a county road and there are multi-story condos nearby. I don't think keeping this a single-story use with the surface parking is really the best use for this, for this lot. So, and in fact, you would get more customers if it were a restaurant on the first story of a multi-story building with housing above it. So, I think those are better ideas for this, for this potter land. It kind of reminds me of the, the coffee shop that was put in at, in Grand View a few years ago with a drive-through where, you know, it's a single-use, single-story building with lots of parking and a drive-through. And I don't think that's something that Edina really needs anymore. And I would recommend kind of moving away from that. And then, like I said, Vernon's a county road. This would just, I think, induce more traffic rather than reduce traffic if it were a full-service restaurant open late at night. And then, having a patio facing north, facing the housing, doesn't really make sense. I mean, typically, patios would face kind of the main road. So, I'm not sure where that came in. But, so, so overall, it's, I think it's a good idea in terms of having a gathering space and an eating place in the neighborhood. I think the land use in terms of a single-story building with surface parking is not really the best use for this, for this property. So, I would recommend something more ambitious. And I know, it sounds like you're a restaurant company. So, it sounds like you're not going to be interested in that. But that would, that would make me much more likely to, to vote for something like this. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Strauss.
Yes. I agree with both Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Miranda about, I liked Lou's comment about it being the kernel of a, of a great idea. I mean, I, I see, that's, that's good. I think it's, well, it's, what's being proposed is so much better than I think is there. The, what I liked about the proposal is that it's not a Caribou or drive-through operation, which would generate vehicle traffic that even greater, I mean, whereas it's not part of the parking factor. It just, and I would see, that would be a much more kind of disruptive kind of operation. And I don't see that being proposed. The gentleman making the proposal, I mean, I think, I, their track record, I mean, the operations that they mentioned, I'm familiar with them and quite a fan. And their connection to Edina, to the neighborhood, I think is going to be valuable. And I think that clearly, it's going to be, if you can get the neighborhood to sort of see what you're proposing and, and join it, that's going to be a huge kind of task. But I think, I like it. And the, and the other term, a gathering space, whatever that is, I think that's a, just an absolutely wonderful concept for what this could be. You know, a neighborhood gathering space. I love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Any, any additional? Yes, please.
Um, I would just like to say, I love your idea. I live over in Highlands and I appreciate having something that's walkable. Because Vernon is walkable, but it's a hard road to walk on. And one thing, at least personally, if I was a neighbor living right on that road, I'd rather see that as a café for breakfast, brunch, and lunch than a dinner place. Because then it's open later. I'm, personally, I'm home more in the afternoon. And I would be in the backyard and I wouldn't want to hear all that noise. And so, I think it would be quieter on the patio in the mornings. And then, you can use it as a community space in the afternoon or something. So, I just think that would be a better use of the space instead of a all-day place. Because then you need less parking. So, I think that's one way to solve the problems of parking.
Thank you. Do you have more, anything to add, Commissioner Barube?
No, I don't, I don't have any, just that, I also didn't realize that you, you have McCoy's and No Low, which are both, you know, speak to your expertise in the restaurant business. And so, like has been said before, having a gathering space right here, I think, would be great. But you'd need to work with the neighborhood, of course, which it sounds like you're trying to do. And you know what the issues are. I wonder, though, if you've ever considered, you know, just, just kind of tapping into what Lou said, if you had someone, you know, building a four-story condo building, maybe it makes it feasible to have underground parking in a restaurant on the first floor that has that gathering spot. I don't know if you've explored that, but that might solve part of that problem.
Thank you. Some initial thoughts from mine, and I, I won't repeat too much of it. But I have to assume that the community wants something there. And so, I, I love this idea, but I'm, I'm really curious to hear, you know, if it weren't this, what's presented, what does the community want, right? Because I am, I think that it is a right place for a restaurant, a gathering area. But again, I don't think that a stop-and-go coffee shop is necessarily the right thing either, considering the traffic implications. So, that's kind of the angle that I'm coming to it, of hearing all of the comments and the concerns from the community is, well, what, what is right? One of the things, you know, I think this is just a difficult space. It's awkwardly shaped. But I'm also, I'm sad about losing, you know, even the little amount of green space there. Which is why when I hear potentially, you know, putting condos there too, I mean, then we're going to lose even more of that green space. So, you're never going to make everyone happy, I don't think. I think the hours are also a concern of mine, though I love the idea. And I live right up the street from Town Hall is my place that I go to. They do have a lot more parking. I'm not sure what the hours are because I'm usually there in the afternoon anyway. But that's the kind of thing that I'm thinking of is, is being a community area. But yeah, maybe tweaking the hours, I think, would be important for me as well. And then, you know, kind of building off of Commissioner Bennett, parking is always the thing that we come back to. And I don't, I don't know what the right idea is here. And I think that there could be some creative options, whether it's working with the county for that road to enable parking on it. Because that was the same thing when I was driving by this space. I was like, this is such a wide side on the side of the road and there's no parking here. How is there not parking? I could totally fit my car here. Not suggesting that we do the illegal parking. But I think that that's, that's one, one thing that comes into my mind. And then, when we have these conversations and I hear the concerns of the community members about the additional traffic on streets and additional parking in the neighborhoods, parking in a neighborhood in and of itself isn't what necessarily concerns me because the streets are public space. But when I think about, you know, sometimes there's in the winter, then if there's parking on both sides of the street, you know, you won't have plows that can get through. Or you think of some neighborhoods where emergency vehicles can't get through. And so, I try and then target, okay, what are the, the roots of those concerns? And maybe then one solution is parking is only available on the one side of the street in front of the apartment buildings that are there, the condos that are there, which would still allow for emergency vehicles and other things to come through. Again, these are just some ideas, but I, I always try and get to what are the real concerns when we hear, you know, traffic and parking? And how can we target those so that we can still find a compromise that allows the neighborhood to have something that personally, like this would, having something this in my community would draw me to there. I would, I would love to move somewhere that had one of these within a walkable area. And so, I think it's just about, again, understanding the concerns and finding solutions for them in a creative way. I will, yes, Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, I just have a couple more things to add, since I went first. You know, you guys just jogged my memory a little bit. Specifically, some details. So, I mean, I was talking more big picture. And I think, as you guys were sharing specific details, there are certain concerns and or opportunities that are probably the sticking points for most people in support or dissent. So, Commissioner Miranda mentioned the patio. I also feel like you would rather have that on the south side because the noise of the roads there, you'll have south-facing sun. It's farther from the neighbors. And unlike most people, I'm a fan of the hours because I'm up then and there's nothing like that in the community. So, I would be there. But again, you're running a business. People also have to, like, understand if it's open that late, you know, it's only a product of, if there are people there. And this is going to be a quiet kind of spot at night, just how it's going to pan out. So, if there is a patio and it's open late, that should be moved to the south side to create better buffer to those neighbors for the noise. And then, that goes with the screening. We didn't really talk about that. But I, I feel like if I were a neighbor right there and I knew no one was going to park on my street, we got plenty of screening and it's not going to be too noisy at night, I don't think many people could even have a problem with this. So, I think whatever you got to do to screen it better or get some feedback there. And then, last thing is just tap, kind of tying into some of your comments about what could go there. I, I actually like what you're doing because, I mean, you talked about another use of, you know, like a room. Is that supposed to be an office space or is that like a meeting space? Okay. So, yeah, I guess it's still single-use. But I, I mean, I'm familiar with just land development. And this is a very, I mean, that Caribou lot was a better shape than this. I mean, this is a very narrow triangle. There's not much you can do on this. And you could see someone doing a stop-and-go coffee shop and that would be the wrong thing to do. So, I, I don't know what you could do that isn't very dense and a lot of money to make it work with underground parking, just financially. So, I, I think what you're doing is reasonable, you know, remodeling and a small addition. It's just, I would shift some of those details to create a more natural buffer to the neighbors to the north. But yeah, I, I'm a fan of kind of what you're doing with the land. And again, compared to its prior use, it's, it's night and day. So, thanks again.
All right. If there are no further comments, then I think that's, I think that's the end of the sketch feedback. But thank you very much for coming in and best of luck in pulling together the next phase. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is the Cahill District Area Plan. It's our working group green print. So, I don't know, I was hoping David would be here tonight. How do, how should we do this, Kerry? Do we have someone from the city who wants to present it? Or do we want me to present it?
I think you should wing it, Katie. Eyes closed.
I would.
Yeah, so, so basically, this is the document that we would use to solicit or try to get residents to apply to be on the working group. A little bit about the timing, because we're, we're going to have the kickoff meeting to kick off the whole, the study on November 15. And this is our last planning commission meeting before that. So, we would like you all to approve this. So, following that meeting, we can begin to advertise and put it out there in the public. So, it's, it's just a document that describes a little bit about the work that we're going to be doing, creating a small area plan for the Cahill area. Those boundaries extend from Cahill Road on the north. On the east, Highway 100, on the, sorry, the north is 70th. And the, the west is Cahill. And then, the south is basically the, the southern border of the city. So, it's a, quite a large area that we'd like to, to study. It is recommended in the current comprehensive plan and the small area plan that we did for 70th and Cahill to expand that small area plan that was done to include the greater Edina Industrial Park. So, basically, what this document does is outline some of those, the number of meetings that are anticipated for the working group members to participate in. We're looking at about a 12- to 15-month process. So, it's, it's quite a time commitment, probably at least two meetings per month that the working group would, would be expected to attend. The working group would, the intention is the city would hire a consultant to assist and assist us in preparing the document that ultimately would, would become part of the comprehensive plan. So, a little bit of the background. We do have a, not necessarily a new member, but a new staff member, new for the planning commission. So, I'd like to introduce Addison Lewis. He is the city's... He is the city's residential redevelopment coordinator. The position, he's been with the city maybe a little over a year, maybe two years now. Two and a half years, time flies with COVID. You kind of lose perspective with being closed for almost a year. But Addison is going to be an addition to the staff to help, help prepare and organize the meeting. So maybe I'll ask Addison to come up and introduce himself and talk a little bit about his background, which is in planning.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, like you said, my name's Addison Lewis. I've been here about two and a half years as the residential redevelopment coordinator. So in that role, I'm involved in anything to do with all the residential teardowns and residential redevelopment. Prior to coming to Edina, I was a planner with the City of Jordan for a year. And then before that, I was a consultant planner at WSB and Associates for about six years. So happy to be getting brought on board and get more involved in the planning side of things.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks for introducing yourself. So I'll also add a bit to kind of overall with what we're doing. I probably could have intro'd with a little bit of that. So David and I, Commissioner Alkire, have been named the co-chairs of this Cahill District Plan. And we've been really pulling together, how are we going to gather the community input? And how are we going to pull together a team to do a district plan for this entire area? It's a rather large area. Our idea was to first, and this is what Carrie kind of mentioned, have like a kickoff meeting. So it's scheduled for November 15th at 7:00 PM, which would love people, especially like Commissioner Strauss, people who have been involved in that area. I think it'd be really great to have a lot of the planning commission there to help kick it off and share some insights. But our plan for that meeting is to have Addison kind of walk through and help facilitate some of the conversation about brainstorming. What could this area be? What's the ideal, like what are some brainstorming ideas of what we could do with this space? And really use that as an opportunity to start getting feedback from the community, but then also seeding interest of who wants to join together then for this working group? Because it is, it's a rather large commitment. We're definitely going to have people who want to contribute that aren't willing to take on as much work. But I do know that there are going to be some passionate people. So right now, I think we're thinking it'll be a total of 11, I think, is what the, the green print states. Really, the goal with that is to have, you know, approximately equal parts, maybe it'll be three parts of residential people who live in that community or near that community, there is not as much housing there. Three people who are involved in the business districts, whether they're landowners or tenants. And then making sure that we also have three at large. So maybe not necessarily people that are affiliated with that area, but in broader Edina community to help shape what, what do we see as the vision for this entire Cahill District. So what we're looking to get approved tonight is really that green print for that working group. But wanted to mention this, this initial kickoff meeting that we're thinking about to both get some initial thoughts and then to seed some of that interest in that working group. So with that, I or Carrie or probably anyone else could answer any questions if there's questions either about the, the green print directly or if you even have any questions right now about like what my, my mind is at, David's mind is at for the district plan too. Commissioner Burribe.
I have a question, just maybe it's just sort of a curiosity of how you'll, this will work, you know, how the process will work? Because my experience is primarily with 44th and France's plan that Jimmy and I, Commissioner Bennett and I were responsible for. And Lou participated in as well. But at that point, the consultant had already been hired and the process was, it seems like, I guess, I guess my question is, you'll have the kickoff before the consultant is hired.
You're asking why we flipped it?
Yeah. So who will hire the consultant? Will you hire the consultant?
So the idea here is, and yes, that is in other situations how it has worked. Though I do hear that it's been all over the board too. And so when we went through the comprehensive plan, that was typically the way that it was. For this district plan, we have a, a bit of a smaller budget, I would say. And so we're trying to be really creative about how can we do some of the upfront work to prepare what our vision is for that area? Where can we bring in community members to do certain roles? And then really focus on having the consultant do what isn't covered by that working group? So the, the plan is do the kickoff, pull together the team, and then that team will put together the RFQ or the RFP to hire than the consultant. So there's ultimately, you know, kind of a first phase of this project, which is forming the working group, starting to brainstorm that area, maybe pulling together like guiding principals or guiding tenants. Then doing the actual exercise of hiring in the consultant and then working with the consultant. So hoping that by pivoting it a little bit, it allows us to maintain the budget that we have for it, but also really lean on a lot of the community members that we have to bring forth their opinions and their skills.
So you'll invite the broad community for the 15th? And then from there, you'll see who's interested in being on the committee solicit, you know, interest? And then, and then you and David will choose from among those who will be on the committee? And you'll go from there?
Yes, I think it's outlined in the green print, but don't quote me on this. Do we need to get the city council approval or is it planning commission appointed?
It is planning commission appointed. It's somewhat similar to the way we did the Southdale District Plan before we started the comprehensive plan. So that's probably the, the closest procedurally. But it would be the, a decision of the, of the planning commission.
Yes, so that's how we'll select them then. Yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
So my understanding is that there isn't like a transportation component to it. But has any thought, I mean, is it going to be just planning commissioners on there? Or is there going to be maybe a transportation commissioner on that or anything?
So right now, David and I are co-chairing and we're looking for nine additional members to be a part of the working group. We have not specifically targeted any, any demographic, but I could definitely see pulling in someone into the at-large that could drive a lot of value if they have experience in transportation or are on the transportation commission. But it hasn't been something that we've intentionally set forward.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, so did you mention there was a schedule? Or is it just this, the two-page green print? Is that kind of it? Or is there something else I missed?
It is just the, the two-page green print that you are being asked to approve for tonight. And then I was just kind of looping in a higher level update on where we are at with the plan. But right now, we're projecting a 12 to 15 month process, really hoping to do the bulk of it in 2022. But this is my first district plan, so I'm trying to be nimble.
Yeah, I was just feedback wise, I, I think you identifying the, the group ahead, you know, ahead of time works. I will say like having people who professionally run meetings and open houses and workshops, like you might miss a little of that with your kickoff, but you probably are going to do another more public kickoff or I'm assuming for like once you actually get going, right? Or is this kickoff more just to, I mean, is the kickoff primarily just to identify people to join the, the pursuit?
The intent of this is to do a kickoff to, hey, we are start, not starting because there was the, the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan that was done. But we are kicking off an effort to pull together a district plan for this area. What are your thoughts for the area? Let's pull together the thoughts. And if you want to then continue it and be involved, please apply. So I would say that this is more a kickoff of the plan and not just a kickoff of the working group.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I just, I saw a lot of value, I'd say of like any of the meetings we had, the consultants at, like the first ones were pretty crucial. So especially because now the community's getting involved. And if you guys aren't prepared, you know, like, I mean, you're gonna, it's gonna, I don't know, it won't go as well as you'd like it to. So it was nice because we had many times, because Sheila and I were kind of green print coming into this. So, you know, if we had the group there with us too, like, I, I don't know if we would have been any more prepared. So, so I, that's just like, not my necessarily word of caution, but if you're going to hire the consultant, like, it's really the gathering pieces that are so critical for them to help, I don't know, run. Because those first meetings are the most important ones, in my opinion. If you kickoff and now everyone's coming interested, I don't know. That's just the one thing I'm a little hesitant about, just in the plan. I don't know if Sheila, you have similar thoughts? If we didn't have consultants with us, how that would have went over?
I'm just, you got me a green. When you said green, I'm, yeah. I had a pretty steep learning curve myself, so.
And I don't doubt you guys couldn't handle it. It's just like you also don't know who's going to be on this group. So that could just be a little more fluid than the other ones. And that could be a good thing, I don't know, but.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that we've, we've had some conversations about, but we're both extremely green too. So first, I would love to have you be a part of that first conversation on November 15th. So really hope that you can make it. And then we also, you know, that's, for that first meeting, a role that Addison is going to help play too, is really driving that facilitation. And we have a meeting now tomorrow too, to, to think through what is the structure? How do we guide it? But yeah, I'm going to be new at that. But we're working with a limited budget. And we wouldn't be able to have consultants kind of do everything that I think normal consultants would do in other engagements.
Sounds good. Yeah, I mean, yeah, that first one of just casting a big creative net really to just get people going. And I think you guys can do that. It's just, again, you don't know who the rest of your team is at that kickoff. So that's challenging. Yeah, I, I will try to be there.
It's somewhat similar to the Big Ideas Meeting that we had, the kickoff of the big comprehensive plan that we did down in Public Works. Granted, we did have consultant help, but we will be fully staffed. Bill Noendorf is going to talk about the economic engine of, of the district. We'll have Ross Bintner there. So it'll be staff and the planning commission to, to help lead us. And so, yeah, we would, we would ask all commissioners to be there and help out.
I mean, Jerry, you were more involved, right? With the, so what do you think?
Well, I've talked to Carrie a number of times where I'm just, I'm surprised at the turnout and the intensity on some projects. And then others where you think it's going to be, it's not. And I wasn't expecting a crowd here tonight. But obviously something is generating and going on there. And I think you just, you, you can't, you're not going to know what might be buzzing out there. And I think Jimmy and Sheila both, you know, saw it. They, they kind of walked into that Morningside area saying, you know, you were bringing donuts and they were bringing pitforks.
We got glue on it.
Yeah, well, you know, that was good, but, but. Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, a learning curve was, that was certainly. But I mean, not to create any alarm, but I think the city staff, even the political representation, people with some kind of, some weight in the community, you know, that, that could stand up and say, you know, this is. So yeah, so I think that, that's, that will, I, having a consultant on board for that certainly worked in our case, but, but I understand, you know, the framework here. So, but I think, I think you've got the resources, so.
Yeah, and Commissioner Strauss, I think it'd be great to have you there too, given your experience with this specific area.
And I, it's a good date. I, I know I'm returning from a trip some days before that, so good.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes, just, just, yeah. Just because of all the comparisons with Morningside, I do want to point out that while I live in Morningside, Morningside was its own village for half a century. So, and it's, it's one of the denser areas of Edina. It's not like super dense, but it's smaller lots than, say, West Edina, closer to Minneapolis. It was its own village. So it had its own node, 44th and France forever. So it, it was sort of like a, a small village. So people there have a very strong identity, probably unlike other places in Edina. And so they have very strong ideas of what they want, which is, which is a great thing. I mean, it's a, it's a very cohesive sort of committee, community. So, I mean, but not all of Edina is going to be like that. So, I mean, this district is mostly industrial at this point. So you, I mean, I don't think you're going to have any, anything like the same kind of input. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Well, you too could see it firsthand.
I'll try to be there. What, do you know a time?
7:00 PM.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, I, I think Commissioner Bennett has me a little nervous now, but I, I'm hopeful that, one, I do think it is a different area. I don't know what exactly to expect, but yeah, I do think that we'll have a lot of support there from, from the city, from staff. So I, I think it'll be a really good conversation. And I'm looking forward to seeing what ideas even shake out of that first meeting and then really pulling a team together to work together.
Don't be nervous. I guess I just don't know, you know, what your presentation or your plan is for that evening. So like maybe just even sharing that and we can provide some feedback too would, would help a lot. If you have anything, you're like, oh, we were just going to talk and go through this thing.
No, Chris emailed me today and asked me if she should send it out. And I, I just don't think I responded to her email. And so that's the only reason you haven't seen it. But tomorrow, we're having a meeting about it. So I could actually distribute it tomorrow, once we have it a little bit more fleshed out and would love feedback then on that.
Yeah, I think that's just my response. It's a little unknown, so I'm like, you're going to kickoff? And it's like, all right, let's do it.
But thankfully, you're not reviewing the agenda for that meeting. The, the item that I think I do need approval on tonight is the green print.
All right, let's do it.
And Carrie, if I can, so to clarify, green print is just Edina's cute way of saying blueprint because we're a green, you know? Green is our color.
Yeah, I don't know the history behind that name, but that sounds good.
Thanks.
I move to approve the green print for the Cahill District Area Plan as submitted.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the green print passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, not going to lie, right on time, chair member comments. Do we have any of those? Commissioner Burribe.
I have a comment. So I wasn't here at the last meeting, otherwise I would have said it then. Because this was actually something that goes back about a month now. But I participated in the city's offer to have us go on an infrastructure tour. And, and there are a couple other of my fellow commissioners there. I thought it was really fascinating. I learned so much about the city. And I guess I would recommend anybody, any citizens who are watching or if the other commissioners haven't done that yet. It's, there's so much interesting stuff that goes on. And, you know, the millions of gallons of water that pass through the city every day and where it all comes from and how they purify it. And just all kinds of really interesting bits of information. It was well done and every one of the city employees that we met was really impressive. And the facilities are amazing. And I just found the whole thing really interesting. So I appreciate the opportunity and I would encourage other people, you know, to take advantage of it when it comes up.
Yeah, just continuing on that, I, I participated in that when I was on the Transportation Commission. And yeah, there were parts of the city that I didn't know existed and lots of infrastructure that I had no idea was there. So I, I found it really, really instructive and going down those deep, deep wells, seeing what was there, interesting.
Any other comments? All right. Staff comments.
Just a quick update from the last city council meeting. So you recall the single family home on France, 4630 France, I believe it was, where they were going to propose to tear down that house and build two villa style homes. The planning commission or the city council took action at their last meeting and they denied the project. They felt that it was too much of an intrusion on the single family homes nearby. So the, from what I hear from the applicant, they're not interested in doing a twin home up close to the street. They just can't make the driveway angles work. So they're going to walk away from it. So we'll see what happens to that site eventually in the future.
Did they tweak that one at all between us and the council, the distance from the property?
They did. Yep. They submitted a plan to meet the setback from the west lot line. So they shifted it 10 feet. They made the home smaller to conform to the building, the building coverage requirement. And they also took that, the westernmost home and shifted that to the south to move away from that neighbor to the north a little bit. So they did tweak the plan based on what you all had recommended.
What was the council's?
It was unanimous, I believe. Yeah. And the 70th and France project will, the council will hold a public hearing next week. So we'll see where that one goes. That is it for staff.
Carrie, can you remind us where, where the Perkins site sits now? Has that been approved?
That is on the city council agenda for next week for final approval. Also, they are in the midst of considering TIF as well. One of the conditions that was put on, you may recall, and I think the recommendation started with, with your recommendations as part of your recommendation for approval, was to take a look at the infrastructure surrounding the area here, you know, make improvements to the sidewalks, roadway improvements to make things safer. So there is a plan to do some of those things. It hasn't been finalized yet, but, so that's one of the things they're considering as part of the final approval and the TIF also, because it's the TIF that'll help pay for all of the, those infrastructure changes to the sidewalks and roads.
Yes, please, Commissioner Bennett.
I just remembered something also like exciting. Did anyone hear the news with Edina Theater, Edina Cinema? So yeah, there's redevelopment plans, new ownership, and they're doing some cool stuff like new seats. They're going to rebuild the bar to match the bar from the Stanley Hotel in The Shining. So like there's, it's going to be cool, you know, versus what could have happened with it. So I don't know, I saw it actually on the news, like on TV, which like I'm not ever watching the news on TV. Like I don't know why it was on and I heard it. I think it was at my folks. I'm like, how did I know about this before? Seen on the news? What? But yeah, no, super exciting. So figured I'd share that.
All right. I think that's the end of my agenda.
I move we close the planning commission meeting.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.